But I do have some confusion, and I know you tried to explain it two weeks ago, in where exactly the third sergeant fits in because your sergeants are based on squads, and basically this person wouldn't be assigned to a squad. And I'm a little concerned as how that actually would function.
That sergeant would fall into the same pattern of days, just shifted away from the current...I mean, they're still gonna work, and they have flex by contract. They're still gonna work those...where are they working now? Six 11-hour shifts per...
Eleven and a half, yeah.
Eleven and a half hour shifts per contract. That sergeant will still work six shifts. It just may not be on an A squad or B squad rotation. We will fill and put him, that person, in where we feel we need that coverage, and that would allow the squad sergeants...and that's gonna be mostly day-centric. And when I say day-centric, I don't mean they're gonna be in here at 6:00 in the morning and leave it at 6:00 in the evening. I'm talking 10:00 in the morning, they're gonna come in, and they're gonna leave at 9:30 at night, or 11:00 in the morning, they're gonna come in, and they're gonna leave at 10:30 at night. That's kinda what they do now when they can. But that gives that daytime coverage with our more senior people, those first few hours are supervisory lists, if you will, then it pushes the ability for the squad sergeants to work later, till 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, when they're getting into the high-frequency, high-liability type calls that we run into more so. And we run into those all the time, we all know that. And I, you know, it's...but, you know, the likelihood of the high-frequency, high-liability stuff happening is more at night when we have intoxicated people out, and there's, you know, the people are home from work, when people aren't at home from work, they're not at home to need service, that, you know...so we have more supervision out during that nighttime theoretically. And again, this doesn't work unless we convert position that's currently not on patrol but counted as patrol body. So it's gotta go back. And that's, you know, if this, if that doesn't happen, then this budgeted $6,000 will carry. Because I 100% agree, until that position is back and we can count on it, this plan doesn't work.
Yeah, I just think that...I'm gonna concur with you there, that with those, without those eight spots filled, you know, if you're flexing people to the evening, there's a good chance somebody's working alone in the morning.
Which we don't want.
And that can be okay sometimes, but we don't prefer it. Right? I don't prefer it.
I do not prefer it.
There is also just the reality of everything that is expected to happen here in the next 12 months with bringing people on, FTO, at least one retirement probably, that I'd be very direct, I agree with Matt, that there's just, it's just not realistic that this is gonna happen anymore. I really don't see it happening. Just logistically. I mean, even if you get that sergeant promoted, so theoretically, you probably end up promoting two if you add this spot.
That's...
So if you get that person promoted, that means you're bringing somebody else on. That new officer, at best, is gonna probably go in the academy in July. If they don't have to go to the academy, at best, they're starting somewhere in May or June probably, and they're on FTO for three months. And so you're into September by the time everybody's cut loose and ready to work on their own.
Well, and the other reason, I'm gonna be frank with you, that I'm pushing for this now, and to get it in a budget now, is again, if we don't spend it, it's there. But we're gonna have a list if we have the retirement that we're suspecting. We're gonna have people taking a sergeant's exam on a list. So logistically, we're not gonna have to run two exams. We will have, hopefully, an eligibility list for sergeant in place so that we promote the replacement, then once we get our other ducks in order, we promote the third sergeant, if we have that ability. And that's definitely gonna be more towards the end of the year. So six, you know, you cut the 6,000, the mayor said, into three, because there's no way we're gonna promote before July.
We do.
But I want the ability, or I'm asking for the ability to make that promotion without doing a budget adjustment next year.
Yeah, and I just, that list will be good for two years.
Two.
Yeah. So I just think that, I think 25 is when you're looking at this. I really do. The other thing is that, you know, promoting that sergeant, it does eliminate a patrol position, that's how that works. And part of the discussion we had was to have that ninth patrol position to cover open shifts, and that'll be completely gone. So then you're covering them with part-time or overtime, and we know our part-time situation is not great. So then we have overtime.
Well, I would say that would be covered by a sergeant then, but, you know, we're gonna quibble over sergeant or overtime.
Well, this is kinda like the last time we really get to have any say, in a lot of, in a lot of ways.
Hey, I...
This is kinda it.
We understand.
You know, like I've, you know, there have been times where we authorized positions, and I said, well, like, the chief deploys them as they will, as you will. But, you know, there's a certain reality that this is kinda the end of the discussion point, because once it's authorized, it's authorized. And it's gonna be hard to look at it and say that, oh, we could've had, let's say, everybody is healthy and doing what they need to, you know, able to do what they need to do, that, well, we could've flexed that ninth position to cover shifts, but we shifted it to supervision. So now we're paying overtime to fill those shifts, and that's unfortunate. Like, that's kinda where we're heading for. They do connect.
I don't agree, but...
Okay.
We're gonna have to agree to disagreement.
Yeah, my, I mean, my experience in watching the budget go and how money's spent, they definitely connect.
Yeah.
That's what I have seen, and that's what I think I will say.
And I would argue it the other way, that right now, we fill daytime slots when they're open with sergeants, so we don't have to pay overtime. Unfortunately, that limits our supervision coming out at night, but I know that we need to keep our overtime down, so that's what we do.
Yeah, no, I...
Detectives out, put them in uniform. They may not be on patrol, but they're in uniform, doing criminal investigation stuff in case they've gotta respond, so we don't have to spend overtime. So I'm trying to be as frugal as I can with the overtime dollars.
Yeah.
My, just, I'm just saying that, based on my training and experience and what I've seen and the way I'm looking at things and trying to get things, supervision is essential as a liability buster. It's essential as, as folks, these younger guys, to see that there's some upper mobility there, even if it's years down the road, it's essential for these guys to see that we've got, I've got a sergeant that has my back when I'm correct, and I have a sergeant there to advise me, and it's not, and it doesn't mean the same, and I know what you're saying, the other officers will do it, but it's not the same as, as a sergeant saying, hey, you might wanna do it this way.
Yeah.
And the younger guys are gonna take the advice of the older guys, but it doesn't carry the same weight, if you will, as a sergeant saying. So, you know, I'd like to see it in there. You know, I do appreciate your position, but, you know, based on, again, you know, my looking at it, this is, that's why I ask.
Yeah, I know, and I hope you understand that this isn't about six grand, right? This is about all of the downstream ripples that would come from shifting one person from one position to another. I mean, we're gonna, we have a few pages to go, but we're about to get into the overtime stuff. I mean, it's, it's still essentially completely out of control. We have to get a handle on, on the staffing before we start worrying about command staff.
The position that we're talking about that we're not talking about, is there a possibility of retirement there too?
I believe.
It's impossible to know.
Yeah, and that's...
Okay.
And...
It's just, it's just, there's just no way to know. That's the cleanest way to say it. There really is no way to know.
It's, and I think it's really a discussion that, that, it's one of those where you're walking the tightrope to hand.
Tightrope, yeah, personal. But there is no way to know how that concludes.
Okay.
There are different possibilities.
One way or the other, Mr. Hubbard.
There are different possibilities, but I think you have to assume that that person is staying as is. And that's, that's my position, it's a little more conservative, and the chief's like, well, we're gonna fix it, and I understand that. I understand your position too. I don't wanna go back to what was happening in, say, like, 2015 or 16, you know, and this, this goes to, before your time, but like, it's difficult sometimes to sit up here and do this when we had shifts not filled that should've been filled.
Right.
So I don't want us to pendulum swing.
I understand.
Like, I'm asking you to be responsible, I think you are.
I wanna try to answer John's question a little better, because I think, I think that, I think that this person that we're talking about has some goals in mind that we've talked about. There's some things that he wants to help us accomplish, and I think after those things are accomplished, I think this person willingly decides that it's time for me to retire. Those goals are getting some admin stuff up and running, getting some, you know, some technology stuff up and running that we already have the beginnings of. So I think, I think once those programs are established that he's really, really involved with, I think that he's going to retire. But that's conjecture.
But if it goes that way, then we're done another patrol one.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, I mean, you're hiring at least one new person in...
2024.
24, it sounds like, right? Assuming that the, the one retirement actually occurs. I'll wait to see. You could be adding, depending on how this goes, if there's promotion, whatnot, you could be adding as many as two or three.
Yeah, at least two.
You could go up to three, you know? And that's...
And the way the timing works with the academies, I mean, depending, you know, if that retirement were to occur, depending on when it was in the year, we might not be putting somebody in the academy until January of '25 to replace that person.
That's, you're, you're right with academy time, it gets January or July.
That, so that guy isn't up to speed until the end of '25. And meanwhile, we're still down a patrol officer here.
Yeah, adding the positions, unfortunately, like, the effect of it really is that adding those two positions, it helps us cover a position that became a detective, and it also helps us have an extra patrol officer so that when people are being promoted or retiring or whatnot, that we can cover the base a little bit. The reality is, is with the size department we have, we're probably not gonna ever add enough to cover all these scenarios, but we're probably always gonna have somebody that's in the process of being promoted or retiring.
Right.
It just kind of seems to go that way. I mean, maybe five or 10 years from now, that won't be the case because of the age of our force, but it just seems to be the way of the world. Somebody's retiring, resigning to go somewhere else, or getting promoted almost every year.
Yeah, and I, I think I said last time, and truly the way I feel, is I would rather promote a corporal, negotiate with the union to get him off the 11 and a half hour days, and try to get it something that spans across this thing that we can use them and that position be night. It's, you know, if it's a 10-hour day schedule, eight-hour day schedule, whatever the case may be, that position is night, covering, you know, what I would call power hours, you know, 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night till 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning.
But we know we're not gonna get anywhere with that.
I don't know that.
And it's not, your decision is not, I feel pretty confident.
I've had some...
And we talked about, years ago, about going to a sergeant, three corporals, we've talked about a lot of different arrangements, and I can tell you the help we've never received was from Teamster776, not once, in terms of the schedule. That is, it's a contractual issue, it's a thing that they, they like it the way it is, and unless you wanna negotiate it away, you know, it's not gonna change, it just doesn't seem that they're gonna give it up. It's how they prefer it to be, it seems.
Yeah, I don't see them negotiating anywhere in the next three years with this contract. I mean...
Well, and in essence, that's why there's, there's not a corporal one here, that's why there's a sergeant on here, as that position's already established a contract.
So I guess what I need to know from the council is whether or not this line 410-112 should continue with or without the additional sergeant.
I would have to say no, sorry.
Yeah, the way I'm sitting here and seeing it, I have to agree, as much as I understand the chief's position, I get all the arguments, I don't disagree with any of the arguments. I'm concerned about the ripple effect of the money, and I'm truly concerned about what happens in 2027.
Yeah.
And I'm not gonna be here, but some of you are. I mean, the federal money runs out the end of 2026. Everybody's fat and happy right now.
Yep.
But come 2027, I lived through this before, when we had to make budget cuts, because in order to raise taxes, it would've been astronomical raising taxes to keep people, and we had to lower the police department by two people. Hardest decision I made sitting in Charles's chair, that's how it had to, it was the only thing, it was the only thing. We cut everything else, there was nothing left. You don't wanna see that, trust me, that is ugly, ugly, ugly. It's ugly for everybody. And so, as much as I agree with what you're saying, and I hear what you're saying, I'm not gonna support it. You know, maybe a new council will, but I'm not going to, because I've been here too long, and I know what's gonna happen in 2027, and I know we're not talking about 2027, but in reality, we are.
Yeah.
Whether we wanna say it or not, it's reality.
Yeah, I mean, the pre-ARPA budget was 11 plus one, so we're gonna have to make adjustments to make that work.
Yeah.
Along with all the things that have happened with inflation.
And that's, I mean, you know, the budget for 2027, the council that's here in 2026 to do that, for the new people coming on, it's gonna be shocking all. For the ones that are still on, it's still gonna be a lot of shock.
Yep.
Yep.
I mean, we've infused a lot of money into this budget, it's going away.
Yep.
And, like I said, I lived through that before, when I was in that chair. Good luck, Charles. It's an ugly place to be, and you won't be liked by anybody.
Not now, so nothing's new.
Well, it'll be worse, trust me.
And I mean, we have done things along the way to help cushion it. You know, when we increased the rate in '21 before ARPA passed, we kept that rate. So you had one year's worth of increase, actually a little better than that, what would be normal.
Yeah.
But we're gonna be in a position where you're gonna have to do your .1, I always say it's about .1 to .15 mils. That's where you're at usually per year. When, if you, if you look back and you kinda average it out, that's pretty much what it works out to.
Yeah.
Anyway, well, maybe .0809, but right in that ballpark is what it ends up being, just to cover inflation. So, you know, there is a certain reality. ARPA being what it is, we do have to make sure we spend those monies off, they do have to be spent. So, you know, in some ways, it's almost prudent to kinda get them spent, and then start to ease in what's gonna have to happen to cover your normal day-to-day expenses. This is Butterfield.
I agree with John, we have to show foresight, galore, in dealing now, and I also agree with John, that was a terrible, terrible time. And as he said, nobody was happy, everybody blamed everybody, it was just a very tumultuous time. So I agree with John, we've got to be foresightful, careful, and stick with what we've got.
I support the chief's proposal with the staff that we have now, the extra oversight, especially at night, I think will help limit liability, I think it'll be good for our young officers, I think it'll be good for morale and for retention, and I have a feeling it's gonna happen eventually. I think with the numbers that we have, extra supervision's gonna be very important.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't think in this year, it's the practical logistics of it, you know, we could talk more about whether or not it should be done, but I don't think the logistics pan. So we're gonna take that out for now, and keep that down. I think, I think you'll be talking about that a year from today. Well, maybe not a year from today, but a year from now, roughly.
I think you'll be talking about it probably in July, or maybe August.
We'll see. Okay.
Because I think a lot of it does hinge on what happens.
What happens with everybody. All right, so that would take...
And I would encourage you to talk about it as soon as we know what's gonna happen there.
I appreciate your positions, I do, and I just, I appreciate you listening.
Thank you.
So that would take that to 687-870, I believe, for 112.
Yeah.
6,000.
Okay. From 112, as we go down, we have 114 is the records and support coordinator, 115 is our part-time staff, which is difficult because of the fact that just, we tend to employ, well, not all, but a fair number of them are retired.
Yeah.
So there's a, you know, there may be others to take their shoes when the time comes, but, but it's just a difficult, we're not in a place as a community, state, country, world, whatever you wanna call it, where you're hiring people to be a part-time police officer that are waiting to take a full-time spot, right? If they wanted a full-time spot, we have one available, theoretically, at almost all times, it seems, at this point. So, I mean, is any, any questions about the part-time numbers?
Yep.
I mean, I don't think we're talking about anything with records retention changing, so that is. 116 is your differential pay, so that's contractual. 117 are your auxiliaries. Now, a lot of that's money in, money out, right, chief?
There's a little bit of that part-time line item too, that could be money in, money out.
That's true, you think of it that way, because it's covering...
But, yeah, it's...
And none of the auxiliary are 120 certified to be part-time, right?
No, no, unfortunately not.
Yeah, yeah.
Candidly, it's nice that those people do what they do.
Yes. I cannot say enough about everyone, our auxiliary officers.
Because that...
Those guys are here, they do the things that nobody else wants to do, which is directing traffic.
So you got people directing traffic at special events, and not everybody in the public is always so friendly.
They are the first ones to get yelled at.
And they get paid a very modest rate to do that.
Yeah.
And I just, I honestly could not say enough about the men and women that we have in that auxiliary capacity. They're just, they're incredible folks.
And are we still recruiting auxiliary police?
We are still recruiting auxiliary police.
So for everybody at home, if you're interested in helping out the borough during special events, you can contact the chief and talk about training as auxiliary police to help the borough out.
Cool uniform.
Pretty cool uniform.
Okay.
Get a whistle.
Don't make promises, do they get whistles?
I don't know.
I don't know that I've seen them with whistles. Don't make promises.
You can bring a whistle.
There you go. Your contracted services are the same thing we've had.
The only thing I worry about there, honestly, is that 3,000, it covers one background investigation, just, just to make everybody aware.
Well, and I think I told you there before, like, the notion that that's static concerned me a little bit.
Yeah.
But we're probably talking about a few thousand dollars here and there if needed, so we can get through that.
I would say, if you don't mind me, jumping to 170, which is the next thing on my sheet.
That is fine.
I think with the addition of the two new officers, we could probably zero this line item, I know we put it in there as an estimate.
Okay.
It's the part-time overtime, you know, if we don't zero it, we could probably dump it down to a low number so that it's there, they can put it.
Well, if you're okay with zeroing it, let's just do that. It's kinda awkward to begin with, right? And I know why it happens, because you're dealing with retired people, but to have somebody in a part-time position working enough that they're working overtime is, seems like a problematic landmine kinda scenario.
It's problematic from a lot of fronts.
Yeah, yeah, I've always felt that way. So that gets us into, we start kinda the overtime various categories. Now, 172 is a holiday payment, so that's, is what it is. It's negotiated.
Quick question.
172?
For Charles, how is 172 different from 179?
I can start the answer for him if you'd like.
Are those not the same payment?
No.
No.
172, 172 covers the initial eight hours for everybody on a holiday, everybody's getting paid like they're here. So for all those holidays, that's covering that particular chunk, and then when you get to the other one, it's the people that are working, it's that additional time and a half they're getting for working that holiday that's covered by that budget.
All right, thank you for that.
Yeah, so it's...
So it's not time and a half, for, when you work in hours on the holiday...
It's double time and a half.
Double time, no, double time. If they work overtime on the holiday, then it's double time and a half.
But it's, it's not dissimilar from the next item, which is 173, which accounts for their personal leave, right? These are days that they have off, that are accounted for, you know, you have to pay them, right? So that's how, and 174 is secondly, similar scenario. So these are essentially all fixed items.
Yeah, they're all contractual.
175, similar vacation, right? That's a fixed item. So that gets us to 176, and we discussed this two weeks ago, and this was rewritten as 30,000 from 50,000. So this is the category when it comes to overtime, that it doesn't fit into one of the other overtime categories that follows. So this does not include shift changes, court, a holiday worked, does not include special events, or an emergency where they're called back, or their half hour over specified by contract, or the drug task force, or a traffic grant scenario. So this is just filling shifts, basically, right?
Well, this is gonna be your shift fill, this is also gonna be your have to come in early, not called in early, but have to come in early for, for something, or stay over late. So that's what's gonna be covered in general. You're here, you're handling an incident, that incident, you're, to get off at 4:00, the incident comes in at 3:30, you're here till 7:00. That's gonna fall in this. You're filling a shift, that's gonna fall into this. Training overtime, gonna fall into this, with the exception of the reimbursed training overtime, which we'll get to in another way.
I was gonna say, I'm like, I felt like that was put under the, the grant.
That frankly will, that, that, that grant stuff will exhaust pretty quick too, and I'll talk about that when we get here. We're talking about week-long training and paying overtime out to do that. And I will, just so council knows, I will, I will go after a renewal of that grant, or that, that money, but I can't guarantee that that will happen. We started off, well, that's a different topic, I'll talk about that one. But that's what's covered under general. And I think that we're still feeling our way through this, because I think there's a lot of things that are getting popped into general now that should go in one of the other categories ultimately, because when I look at and project out towards the end of the year, like, if you look at 180, which is, special events? No.
Holiday OT.
That's 179.
179 is...
That's holiday, holiday worked.
Let's say that, holiday worked.
Okay, okay, okay. But if I look at, if you look at some of those other categories where they're projecting down, like this, 177 is...
Shift change.
Shift change. A lot of, I think the special event, 182...
181, 182.
An emergency, if you look at emergency there, you'll see that's 182. You'll see that averaging out what I'm projecting we're gonna spend in 182, is taking the first nine months of the year and divide it and multiply it by 12, is like 500 bucks. So I think that some of the emergency stuff we're spending now is finding its way up into general, which we've gotta be more diligent at labeling that. I suspect if we get an incident where we're calling somebody in, that's popping up into general, setting one an emergency, which is where I envision it being, for calling somebody in for incidents or things like that.
All right. So that's like a timesheet documentation timesheet, yeah.
So we've got, you know, 10 different overtime categories here, and we did this intentionally... So we've got, you know, ten different overtime categories here, and we did this intentionally to try to figure out where and why this money was being spent, yet we still have one-seventy-six, just sort of regular overtime, um, which, uh, you know, is all stuff we should be attributing, we should know exactly where that's all coming from still. And I understand that that's a process we're working towards, right? But if we look at all ten, and thank you for preparing that spreadsheet today, it's, it's been very helpful, uh, but if we look at all ten categories together, and I am counting one-seventy-nine regardless of the fact that it's contractually obligated, it is still a massive source of overtime, right? If we look at it all together here, the numbers you've proposed are higher than last year's. And we added officers specifically to get these numbers under control.
So your numbers are going to come down.
Hold on, let me finish up a little bit here. Additionally, we have now unlimited use of part-timers to fill shifts and stuff like that. So we should be seeing these numbers starting to drop, and, you know, you and I have talked about this, uh, before, you know, I've been watching your numbers this year, I think you're doing a good job. I mean, I'm not going to say you're going to hit the numbers that were budgeted, but I can tell you're exerting control to try to control them. But with two new officers coming online next year, we should see these numbers drop precipitously, and instead they're going up. And one of the ones that really jumps out here to me as a predictable, budgetable expense that is going up inexplicably is the special events. According to the numbers here, last year was ten grand, which doesn't seem right. You're projecting thirty-six hundred, and then you're asking for seventeen grand, so it's, it's a seventy percent increase.
Special events is one of the categories where there is a, there should be, except for, save very few, and, and I can tell you what they are. Fourth of July, I, if we put, I put a full-timer down there, I don't usually build a rec park for Fourth of July, I feel that's a borough event. Christmas festival, since the borough's a sponsor, I don't build Christmas festival for overtime, try to use part-timers, but if we can't, don't build Christmas festival. And there's, there's one additional one. We have a lot of time dedicated to Bike Week, just because the sheer number of people in town, not all that's reimbursable, the parade of chrome or the ride, that part is reimbursable, but the rest of having officers out is not, we can't build that back.
Right, but my question here is, why is that number jumping seventy percent? I mean, these numbers should be completely predictable.
Because when I put it in, I, that's assuming, and I put it here, that's a worst-case scenario, that's assuming we have to work them with all full-timers or we put everybody that we have on. If we have to work with all full-timers, that's assuming working these special events with all full-timers. We may not spend that, that also, that number, Matt, also has in it, and I was going to reduce it, and then Wes, you asked me to break this out, or break it down a little further. I put the reimbursement for C O P I, which is a special program we got, which is the Community Oriented Policing Initiative, which is the, the stuff where we got community donations to put foot patrols, bike patrol, and mounted patrol out, one foot, well, out, to do community oriented policing. There is twenty-two-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and eighty cents left in that, so that's in there for, for overtime, for those things. And then there's an additional six-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and twenty-three cents added in there, uh, the training overtime that we got from the hospital. So if you take that roughly eighty-five-hundred bucks, eighty-six-hundred bucks, and subtract it from your, your fifteen-six, that puts us down below the ten thousand from last year.
Okay.
So, can I interject for a minute? I'm looking at our year-to-date number for twenty-twenty-three right now, it's on the screen. Line item one-eighty-one was budgeted at ten thousand, we're only twenty-seven-hundred spent, that makes no sense to me.
No.
Because we've had a lot of special events already this year.
Right.
So, so apparently, I would suggest, based on these numbers, that regular OT one-seventy-six is where that's landing, because that's sixty-three thousand spent year-to-date, which is over twenty thousand, twenty-three thousand over budget. So this is an issue of the officers probably not filling out their timesheets correctly, is my guess.
Well, and just in all fairness to everyone, the way we're tracking all of this is still relatively new.
Sure.
And that's one of the things that also makes this whole projection process very difficult. Like, we have good data for, well, basically just twenty-twenty-three, right? Twenty-twenty-two, we started tracking this way partway through the year.
Right.
So, I mean, we know the total number, I won't imply that we don't know what we're spending, we, we know the total number, but the breakout data is incomplete for twenty-twenty-two. So I, I do think this is something that's going to become more accurate as time goes on, and I, you know, despite of why we may have done it this way, I think that it's helpful to everyone as we go forward to know a better picture of, of why it's being spent the way it is.
I, I also believe in this category, that I believe that we've had a lot of luck with our part-timers being available for special events this year. Like, I, I, I'll tell you, the Fourth of July this year, oh, we didn't have a full-timer down there. It was all part-time officers, and Sergeant Wake was on duty, and I was down there, so the, the expenditure there was part-time. We've had a lot of other special events are that way. Christmas festival last year, we usually put on an extra person for Christmas festival, that was a part-timer last year. So, I mean, it, that is falling under that part-time category too. And some of it is definitely, it's not going in the red block on timesheets. We capture it in, in our stuff that, or these things we capture as special, but I don't know that there is a timesheet category spec, categorized special events on the timesheet, I would have to look.
There is, oh, there is.
In conclusion though, I, I just want to make this point, and I'll stop making it, because you've all heard me say it over and over again. We should be seeing these overtime numbers drop next year, and it's not, it's going up, that's hugely problematic.
So.
And I, and I have spoken to a couple other municipalities that are similar sized, with universities, and with similar sized forces, and their overtime budgets are nowhere near ours.
They're, they don't have, they're not Gettysburg, Matt, they're not getting an extra two million people a year.
Totally, I get that, but we're also not arresting tourists every year.
No, but we have to, we have to police them, we have to keep them safe.
Right. But I'm talking about similar sized forces in similar sized towns that do not have an overtime budget anywhere near this.
They don't have the special events we do, I guarantee it.
If we take special events out and look at this number, it's still well over a hundred thousand dollars a year.
They don't have the extra people in town, even outside of special events, where we've got to bring and we've got to police.
All right, I made my point, that's, I'm excited now.
I, I, I would speak to the court overtime one, because we're going to put two additional officers on, we can't control court overtime.
That's a tiny number.
The, uh, some of the other ones, um, the one I did note that should probably be reduced in the budget is the traffic grant, uh, because even though, I know it looks like we're going to hit it, well, we're well over, and the traffic grant, there's a corresponding revenue to that, I don't know that we're going to get that much money next year, we just got a lot of money from people that didn't spend theirs, and we usually get, um, we get that, but I don't know that that's going to come this year. I would recommend that one down, I think that's one-eighty-five, down to five thousand from seven.
Okay, so you'd say just four-ten, one-eighty-five, down to five thousand dollars?
Yeah. But we have one-seventy-six down to thirty thousand. I've also talked to another, number of other municipalities that don't count, that's why I pulled that out, made it separate down there, one-seventy-nine as overtime. Then it's surely because somebody is working a holiday, they're getting paid for that, it's contractually obligated pay. Additional pay, so it's not like they're working extra, they're just working the day that they're scheduled to work.
Sure. Sure.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess what I really look at is, so, I take all the lines that contribute to uniform staffing and look at them, uh, and we're up right around forty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars, if I count correctly. But I'm also aware that for twenty-twenty-three, we budgeted those two new officer positions as nine-month positions because we weren't going to get them until at least April, and it turned out to be later, and I'm just talking what we budgeted for. And of course, I'm also aware that obviously every year, uh, that costs of staffing increase. Now, I don't think that those two items account for that much difference. I don't, but I'm going to have trouble putting on a specific line, except for one-seventy-six. You know, I think that those two items together probably yeah, you're probably talking about twenty or twenty-five grand, not forty-five or fifty, and that's I hate to say it, but in the, the scheme of the police department, we have to keep it under control, spending-wise, but at the same time, you know, it it's, compared to the whole of what we spent on staffing, it starts to look like a small number. You just got to be conscious that, I mean, the police department's going to be two and a half million dollars next year. That is, it's the only twenty-four-hour department, I get that, but that's a lot of money.
Well, and, and I, I will tell you, I am, I am conscious of that, I, I tried to work through that, that's why I've been, you know, going out and trying to find the, the, uh, non-traditional funding sources, if you will, uh, for different things, the National Night Out was, was one, I got somebody to, to fund the personnel costs for that. And again, that was, you know, sixteen or eighteen hundred dollars, I don't remember exactly, but that, that was overtime funds that came out of most likely general there, that, that were reimbursed. So, I mean, I, I'll try and, that's why we went out and got the, uh, the hospital grant, we went out and did the, the C O P I, because I didn't want to just put overtime out, but that's, that's just something you know, everything that, and you've heard it before from me, I know at least you and Matt, everything we did for COVID to, to try to reduce the spread, if you will, is contrary to community oriented policing, so that's, we just had to get folks out.
I don't know why I am shocked to hear that we would be paying overtime for National Night Out, but of course we are, of course we are. An event to put the police out there and build goodwill, why wouldn't we be paying overtime for that as well? You know, there's, it's a question, I think, sometimes of where we spend our money and why, uh, how we're managing these payroll resources.
I think we're in a much better place than we were when I came here eight years ago. But just understand, the police department went from a one and a half billion dollar operation to a two and a half billion dollar operation during that time. Now, it probably should not have been that low when I got here, and I'm going to be departing soon, and I need you to be as straightforward with the person that replaces me, or the people that replace some folks here as you have been with us, because it really is essential. This is pretty much the time of year that we have to do this, and I think we've grown a lot, and we've made things a lot better between yourself, the mayor, myself, Charles, some other folks, but I need you to keep doing that. Okay, it's critical to, I, I want the public to be safe, but there are limitations to what the public's going to fund, so you just got to keep all that in mind.
Absolutely.
All right, is there anything that we want to do with overtime, I guess is where I'm at? We're talking about one-seventy-six, which is the regular that's pretty much the only one that has flex in it. If it does, one-seventy-seven, one-seventy-eight are shift change and court.
If you recall, the one-seventy-six line item has been cut, it was usually budgeted at fifty, you're down now to thirty.
Yeah, no, I know that, that's.
I just wanted to make sure that point was made.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, now we did that, that was two weeks ago, right?
Yep.
So, uh, one-seventy-nine is the holiday worked, one-eighty, the holiday OT.
You know, I'm, I'm going to, I gotta, I gotta respond to that, Charles. Yes, that cut was made two weeks ago, but even still, we are above what we paid this year. We added two officers to drop this number, and instead the number has grown, even after making a voluntary twenty thousand dollar cut to that line item. I, I don't know where, I don't know where, how to do it either, right? And I would help you if I could, but we're not allowed to see your schedules, so we don't really know how people are being utilized, all we have is anecdotal information where we are out on the town, and we see three or four officers working, even when the authorized force is two. I don't understand or know where money is being spent, but we all agreed last year, we would add officers to get this overtime under control, and it's not, it is bigger in this budget, even after making a voluntary twenty thousand dollar cut two weeks ago. I don't know the answer here.
Items I can control, I'm, I'm cutting as I can. I cannot control holiday pay. Can't control it, it's contractually obligated, that increased seven grand.
The cost of living and, I, I understand all that, I understand all that.
Now, I mean, I, I, if, if we had longer-term data to work with for how this has been split out, this conversation would probably be a lot harsher. But I, I'm not going to try to tell you what it is in line one-seventy-six, because we don't have that data in the long term. Next year, the year after, you all have a much better idea. Because we have accounted for so much of it, as you said, like, the things that are uncontrolled, the fixed items, like, they really are accounted for.
And hopefully with the two new ones on the street, and that will come down. But here again, they're new, they're not on the street.
Yeah.
So we don't know.
Yeah, I mean, like, best case, we're going to have one hopefully finish an F T O in the first quarter, but the second one won't, right? You know, and that's just because of the good fortune of who we hired. I mean, it's not where we'd like to be, we're not able to hire act one-twenty, but we got somebody that was partway because of previous service, yeah. All right, can we, uh, agree that we're kind of expended on one-seventy-six and what there is to say?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, as, as Chief alluded to there, one-seventy-nine, you know, holiday worked, and one-eighty, holiday overtime. In every line you look in this type of thing, because of the nature of how you negotiate a C B A, these things are, are increasing. That's what happens with wages, usually. One-eighty-one, special events. We talked about this previously. A lot of this is money in, money out. It is a little bigger than it was in the past, but we talked about that in accounting, and whether or not everything had been put in there previously that should have been. Uh, one-eighty-two, and if anybody wants to jump in, please do. One-eighty-two is that emergency overtime, held over, or called in, and that's the kind of thing, if we can, I know it's difficult to for anyone with the number of overtime categories we have, to get it documented correctly, but the, if you get good data in, you'll get good data out. So when somebody's held over, we got to try our best to make sure they document that that way, and make sure that, you know, we have what we need on timesheets. One-eighty-three is just because of the way their contract is written, they work an eighty and a half eighty-one, and one and a half hours every pay period, so you have half hour there for overtime and every pay period for each person. You have the drug task force in one-eighty-four. Traffic grant you talked about previously, one-eighty-five, dropping that down a little bit. Uh, one-eighty-six, we start the benefits. Sick time buy pack, vacation buy packs, one-eighty-seven. Healthcare buyout, one-eighty-eight, that's if somebody doesn't use the healthcare, they get it elsewhere. These are all C B A items. Uh, one-eighty-nine, your vision. Twenty-nine and one, uniforms, again, this is all collective bargaining. Uh, one-ninety-two is FICA, one-ninety-three Medicare. One-ninety-four unemployment. One-ninety-five, uh, the H R A contribution. You know, contractual items, or just required items. One-ninety-six is the healthcare, same deal, contractual. Uh, one-ninety-seven, I mean, as we go through here, that's worth noting, this is happening all over the borough budget. I would, and I would argue this is one of the things we're doing to not kick the can down the road, is we're paying into the pension at a time when the pension fund took a little bit of a hit, and we are uniquely positioned, uniquely might not be the right word, we were unusually Uniquely positioned, uniquely might not be the right word. We were unusually positioned compared to many pension funds that is fully funded. So I, I remember that hysteria about ten years ago, and the borough has not been in that position, so. That's just response, being responsible. Uh, one ninety-eight, all your life insurance and short-term disability and so forth. One ninety-nine, dental. Two-hundred's pension for the non-uniform. All right, so the first thing that really is supply-related is four-ten, two-ten, operating supplies. Job leave. Static, but I wanna check. Yeah, I keep on.
Eleven, seven, fifty.
Yeah, it's actually down two hundred and fifty dollars. Chief, if there's anything, I'm not asking you to explain every category. Don't take it that way, but if there's anything you want to highlight as we're going through these, please do.
So I would, I would just point out that, that in operating supplies, and, and I'm looking at the, the expenses versus revenue sheet from ten-four, we were at the thirty-nine point four-six percent. We had spent four thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars. I'm reticent to lower this number anymore because we really try to only buy things that, off supplies and supplies and things like that when we need them, but, you know, I pinch pennies. Uh, and if, I'm just, I'm just worried if we, if we lower that, that I'm not gonna have the funds in there that I need to get the operating supplies if we go to, you know. You know, we gotta print more reports. We try to print reports to stay down on paper. If I don't have to print a report, I don't print a report. If I have to start printing all the reports, then I have to be on paper.
Yeah, I, I try.
Just, just things like that.
I try not to play in percents too much because at the end of the day, that's an eleven thousand dollar, five hundred dollar item, eleven thousand, five hundred dollar item. Then we're not talking about a hundred grand.
I just.
And I know that's a lot of money, like in my personal budget, but in the sake of running a police department, that's actually not a lot.
Yeah, we're nuts.
Yeah, we're not talking about much.
I, I will assure you that I'm not one of those people that, just because the money's there, I spend.
Yeah, no, that's fair too. We talk about budgeting things and like what was put in and what's not, and some organizations operate that way, some levels of government operate that way, and we do not. I don't want you to have to like hoard an office full of paper because things are gonna be cut, you know, we're, that's just not a big item. John, looks like you have a question.
No, I'm looking for something up there for you.
Is it better than mine?
Uh, four-ten, two-fifteen postage. It's up slightly, but the price of stamps is going up. Miscellaneous expenses, this deals with your investigative restocking, some badge stickers, that kind of stuff, which if you're wondering, there's. A bit of an increase there, but. I don't have a split out in the, the previous year. Let me go back a few more years. Well, we didn't used to have that line. Okay. I mean, some of that, Chief, I'm, I'm assuming that's investigative.
It is.
Equipment.
It's investigative-driven, and we try to, we try to keep a stock of the common stuff we use.
The consumables and so forth.
This year, we had to, we had occasionally had to purchase some DNA swabs that, that we usually have in stock, and, and so they're kind of expensive, gunshot residue. Some of this stuff has a shelf life, um, what they call NIC tests, where the, it's the test for narcotics and drugs. Um, so that, that's what's coming out of miscellaneous expense item. The swag stuff, I'll tell you, I try to keep that out of there. I try to buy that out of a donation fund, but sometimes I can't.
Right.
So that's, and I know that, again, we're not talking a lot of money, but it's fifteen hundred dollars, so it's.
Well, I think the difference overall, we're probably talking about investigative equipment, and the reality is the detectives are doing a good job, and they've had some cases where they've needed to consume some.
Yes.
I mean, unless there's anybody that feels differently, just, I'm okay with that. That's. Your gasoline, two thirty-one is static.
Yeah, I mean.
I was.
We had the same conversation with Mr. Harbaugh. I mean, do we have any reasonable expectation fuel costs won't go up this year?
I am, well, honestly, I look at that and. We're about seventy percent through, and I guess we're about seventy percent a year. That's why I thought, you know.
We're right on target.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty much on target, so I didn't, that needed bumped, and I looked at Charles' stuff, and I think Charles actually populated that one. I, I thought that was probably appropriate. I mean, we may go over, we may go under.
All right, if you're comfortable with it.
Yeah, just something to keep an eye on. Future years, definitely. Keep an eye on. Doesn't seem like it's gonna change. Uh, two forty-two, protection of persons and property. Ammunition. Nine thousand dollars. That's typically a rate where that sits, and then, uh. Twenty-five thousand dollars.
And actually, in, in looking over everything, putting it back together, I think we can lower that one to twenty-nine thousand from thirty-four. Just add some stuff together, pull some other stuff out, looking. Uh, I believe it's in, in the budget now at, at thirty-four. I'd be comfortable making that twenty-nine.
It is. I mean, I don't know if, if you wanna comment on some of the equipment you're looking to purchase there.
Um, well, we have to, we have to get our new people, some of the active shooter stuff. We're still trying to buy a couple rifles of time to get everybody their own patrol rifle to make that. Um, and then there's, there's some other, uh, we didn't buy this year, we're still buying, um, things, but we've got, just so council knows, we've got every officer helmets now, uh, which are, was about a ten thousand dollar expenditure. We've just ordered what they call in conjunction with plates for everybody's body armor. Um, that's about a ten thousand dollar expenditure. Um, and, uh, there's, there's a few other things. Again, a couple rifles, some, some sights, uh, we have, we need to get some magazines. So, um, there's, there's a restock every year on magazines. Springs get weak in them. This, this is, this is generally the, the stuff that, that, I hesitate the term we use if we have to go to battle, but that's what it is. Uh, so, um, it's, that's a pretty good drop from last year, but we, we did make that investment to buy some things in this year's, well, I keep saying last year. It's a pretty good draw from this year's budget, but it's, we, we did make that investment, and we're still getting those. Uh, we, we should have shields for all the cars. We just ordered, we ordered two of those. Actually was able to get them in last year's budget with a little bit we had left over in this category, so we ordered two more, and I may order an additional one of those. Uh, this is, this is the only category, after I sit here and tell you that just because I have money, I don't spend it. Um, this is the only category that, that, that I will really try to push to the limit and make sure we get everything we can, because there's, there's small things that, that we don't budget for that, that are really.
There's.
Good to have, that, that, um, we're, we're, uh, we're working through. Um, some of the stuff we budgeted for to buy last year, um, I was gonna give the hospital props here. They came through and are paying for, uh, trauma, active shooter, medical kits for us out of the, the money that they donated to us, so that money is still, still hanging in this, for this year. Uh, so that's the kind of stuff we're getting with that. Unfortunately, those things are very expensive. And, uh, they're not generally something that's very shareable. The, the helmets aren't very shareable.
Oh, yeah.
Their size, the, the in conjunction with plates are, are not, um, you know, we, at some, at some point in time, we'll probably get a few gas masks to have. Those really shouldn't be, but I don't suspect they're gonna get a lot of use, so I, I think that we could have those just to have for somebody on duty, and unfortunately, we need those for, for our herd, but.
Now, I've been through the myth of shared P P E. I've done that, yeah.
It just, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't last. People don't take care of it when it's not their own, as much as they try.
It actually doesn't fit quite right, and it's not ready to go when you need it.
As I said, last year, we made that, that big investment, and we were, we were in the forties going last year in the budget, so.
Yeah, it was forty-four last year, so. Add two people and one, you know, that, that is drive some of that cost.
Now, even though I lowered, um, I said we could lower that one to twenty-nine, I need to kick the TASER up because somehow we, we carried this through as last year's number, and we need new TASERS this year. Um, that one I need, if we can, to raise to sixty-two. Uh, we have to replace three TASERS, um, and they are rather expensive. And then we're going to a new program with part-timers rather than issuing them a, uh.
So that's four-ten, two-four-nine.
Yep.
Sixty-two hundred dollars. All right, uh, let's see here. Four-ten, two-five-one, your parts and maintenance. How does that work?
I would pretty much rely on Robbie as the, what we need to get, and, and, uh, sometimes we, we, uh, use a little bit out of that for, um, replacing stuff that has to do with the radios and computers, but for the most part, that's, that's oil and, and, and parts that we need for the cars and things like that, and we're, we're fairly lucky that, that most of the vehicles are new, or newer.
Well, that was, I mean, my question was gonna be how that works with the fleet management program and so forth, but I see it's a relatively small item, so.
It is, and we, we ended up this year, and this is, I, I don't know that it's, it's anybody's fault besides the, the situation we're in, but we ended up having to replace tires on a lot of cars, which we hadn't since we started this lease, uh, because we were actually rotating them out before we needed new tires on them, but because of pushing leases and them going, uh, us having to extend leases, we ended up having to put some parts in some of these vehicles that, that we otherwise wouldn't have. Robbie, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Cause they can't get vehicles.
Uh, no, we can't get vehicles.
Yeah.
Year-to-date, this line, then we budgeted eight thousand, we've only expended thirty-one hundred.
Okay.
So we should. That represents the five hundred dollar decrease.
Next year.
Now, all else being equal, we should have all cars that are under warranty, uh, because of the way we lease them, but it's not working out that way just because of availability of vehicles. And we're, when we put orders in, last year, half orders were canceled.
Yeah.
So.
I get that. All right, two-five-two, your computer copier video parts. Uh, two-sixty, the, uh, small equipment covers the calibration. Speed timing.
Yeah.
Uh, towing costs is three oh one.
I'm assuming the radar bill still hasn't gone anywhere, right?
Correct. John? I don't expect the radar bill ever to go anywhere.
Dan Oll does not want any more.
Want to save my standards? We were gonna get radar next year for the whole thirty-five years I've been a policeman.
Yeah.
No, I, I'm. That's pretty much, yeah, that, that's the kind of timeframe I was going to discuss. All right, uh, three.
Actually, can I?
Yep.
Did we, I have this dim memory that maybe around twenty, late twenty-twenty, maybe early twenty-twenty-one, about the time that the Baltimore street fire, did we buy a couple, radar speed signs?
No, we discussed it.
We discussed it.
We did not buy them.
That's why we did.
I remember discussing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do too.
All right.
And I remember that, that, that was a capital item.
It was a capital item, and it was not agreed upon.
We bought the, uh, traffic signals.
Correct.
All right.
And then there were informational signs, and there were those signs or trailers, and yeah, some of those things did not get through.
Okay. Thank you.
Because it does come up. I mean, the speed issue, that's, that's something that probably just about every day, somebody talks to me about.
Yeah, I've been knocking on a lot of doors, especially on West Middle Street. Every single person brings up the speed through that corridor, and they actually had one guy tell me that the biggest culprit are, uh, the Cumberland P D. Drive up through there at speeds that he cannot quite believe. So, I said, well, they're probably on their way somewhere important, right?
If they are, they're not running lights and sirens.
That is correct.
I've witnessed that myself plenty of times.
Fourth Street, Fourth, right.
I was gonna say, we got an email on Fourth Street today.
So do you know.
Which I, I was gonna say, I'm not asking it, address it right now, cause you off tomorrow the next day. I felt pretty confident that we had taken some steps there, but it, it is.
We do rotate through just to address it really quick. We rotate the guys through. It's not the only place we have speeding complaints. The guys who are over there, we try to pass through. Um, the truck issue, it's, uh, it's, it's an extremely difficult, if not impossible, one to look for, so it just, it's, you know, you get deliveries.
Just do me a favor, get back to the gentleman when you, you know, in a normal timeframe. I know it just happened, or I just got it.
Yeah.
To you this afternoon. Legal services. That's just kind of a necessity we deal with. Three-fourteen, uh, three-twenty-one, telephone landline. Which deals with, I mean, that's just how that is split out between the departments. Three-twenty-four. Wireless carrier. Three-twenty-five, internet, that's how that's spread out. Three-twenty-seven, be one to keep an eye on for the next few years. I don't know how your portable radios are doing, but I can tell you that the knobs on ours at the fire department are starting to fail.
Yes, and they, they will not fix them locally. They will get them, they will send them back to Motorola. They will give you a price of thirteen or fourteen hundred dollars to fix them. We had one this year.
Do you have, you have two knobs? So for everybody, what happens on these radios, there are two knobs. One is a, one clicks, and that's your channel knob. That one's A-OK. The one that doesn't.
The volume.
Work is the volume. Yeah, and if you're in a unfortunate situation, this happened to me several times, that volume knob not having, not being tight enough, it creeps down to almost off, and you can't hear anything, and you don't know that you're not hearing anything. So that's something to keep an eye on here the next few years. You're gonna have to consider how to address that.
Just for council's information, and I may have given this to you before, we bought two new portables, or ordered two new portable radios for the two new officers. Uh, again, I'll give props to Wellspan. They agreed to buy them for us, uh, but that was fifteen thousand dollars.
I was gonna say, I was gonna ask you what yours are up to.
Yeah. So they're about seventy-five hundred dollars county price per radio, between seven thousand, seventy-five hundred, I wanna say.
Yeah. Ah, just not, and that was one of those things, it was great that they were all bought when they were bought. The downside of that is they're all gonna go bad right about the same time. Software, three-twenty-nine. Looks similar to me.
I would propose reduction this.
Okay. Is there something in particular you're not gonna be using, or?
Yes. The CODI cloud hosting, the CODI annual maintenance.
Because?
Because they're not billing us for twenty-twenty-four.
It's be like, come in like, bet, I'm just gonna say, I'm like, Matt's head's gonna explode. You better be using this CODI thing.
When is it going online for us?
Twenty-twenty-four.
When?
That's still up in the air. Hopefully, in the first half of the year, I hope to see it by March or April.
They're giving us the year.
Where they're giving us the year.
From us?
Yes.
Do we have that in writing from them?
Yes, just got it. We have that in writing, and we also have a credit with them of the cloud hosting fee that we already paid between thirty-five hundred and three thousand dollars.
Send us a copy of that, please.
So we zero out both those lines?
Yes.
So, okay, let me, uh, ba-ba-ba, that would be.
Sixteen-eight.
Sixteen-eight fifteen. Let me do that quick.
Yeah, I just got that over the weekend. Charles already got it too.
Okay. Thirty-four, four, five, six, minus sixteen.
So they're not charging us because they're not online yet?
Charles, check me, but that takes, I think that goes to seventeen, six-four-one.
They're not gonna, if we start using them, they're not gonna charge us till twenty-five.
That makes it sound like maybe we're a guinea pig.
We will be the thirteenth agency to go live once they have their new stuff worked out. They have their beta stuff out to different agencies already. Um, we will be the thirteenth agency. We're number thirteen in the queue to go live.
When will migration of existing data commence?
They already have a copy of existing data. They will put that in, then right before we go live, they will do another bump of existing data to, to firm up that. Uh, I would suspect a month or two before we go live, they'll do that, that second bump, so we can go in and clean up anything that doesn't transfer over properly. Uh, and then, uh, all our data from our current system will be in the new system.
Do they have an auditing process to make sure that everything's intact?
They do. They do this across the nation frequently. They do, and I don't have that exact work up there. I'm working on getting that to you, but, uh.
Okay. So the, for the public's benefit, they're talking about records management system, and basically, the chief asked us to go with a new records management system. The council agreed to that, budgeted for it, went to the vendor to make this happen. The vendor said, hey, we're. said, hey, we're actually about to change, upgrade our system.
Ooh.
And if you turn all your people to CODI, and what's the new one called, CODI?
CODI Pathfinder.
CODI Pathfinder, like, if you change all of your officers over to CODI, and then try to implement Pathfinder in a few months, people are gonna be very upset, to learn a new system and then abandon it almost immediately, uh, so that's why this, and it just does, it really, I can, like, feel Matt, like, like his, like, breathing, but it's, it, it just drags, it is drug.
It's like having a pub next to you.
So long.
Uh, no, the question that's occurring to me is, right after we initially paid the initial licensing on this, we then found out there was gonna be a whole secondary bill for servers, so my question is, did we ever purchase those servers?
No, we went to cloud, we went to cloud hosting, we moved to cloud.
So we never actually purchased the hardware?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Well, that's good, because that was a very unpleasant.
That's, that's how we ended up with the between three and four thousand dollar credit at CODI for, for the cloud hosting service, because we didn't use it.
Okay. Okay, great. So three thirty-one is the travel reimbursement, it's a pretty small item, uh, three fifty, uh, vehicle insurance, that's set, um, three fifty-one also insurance, that's set, or four seventy-seven, CPA Act, uh, three fifty-two also insurance, it's liability insurance, three fifty-four, workers' comp, again, these are all fixed numbers, some is just how Hockley breaks it down, inland marine, we tried to figure that out one year.
Right.
Can be very difficult to figure out, um, law enforcement liability is three fifty-eight, the commercial umbrella portion for the police department is under three fifty-nine. Uh, three eighty-four covers the lease of the copier fax printer unit. Check gets us to four twenty, dues and subscriptions and memberships, that is up just a hair to deal with.
About four ten.
Increases, four ten, four twenty, four ten, four ten is zero. Judgments and damages, I don't think we're anticipating any, or, that's something we use when we are anticipating such a thing.
Well, there's a forecast of eight thousand dollars.
Four ten, four ten?
Yeah.
Public, the budget is zero.
Right, but.
I can't explain that, I don't know if it's gonna be prudent to explain it public. He's looking at the forecast for four ten, four ten, and I don't know that that's gonna be a publicly disposable piece of information. Judgments and damages.
Uh, if we, I don't think we're gonna have anything next year other than maybe a premium payment, but we don't even really know that.
All right, uh, four ten, four twenty, again, that was the subscriptions, which seem to be, they're up very slightly, but everything is up, uh, I mean, it's like a hundred dollars. Uh, four ten, four five two, those are all the contracted IT services, so again, that is basically the police department's portion of all the IT components, all the various licenses. Four ten, four sixty, continuing education, so there's a small portion there that deals with a borough-wide initiative to do some con ed, and then the majority, uh, is the police department's continuing education, nineteen thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars, which I think is, let me check here, but I think we're.
Roughly.
Pretty close to where we were, up just slightly, like, a couple hundred. All right, but my understanding is pretty much everybody's supportive of con ed, so unless there's some sort of outcry moment, we'll continue. Uh, four sixty-one, community policing trainings, that's broken out a little separately. Five hundred dollars. Uh, four ten, seven forty, capital purchases, now this changed from the initial draft way back when, but it's been steady since then, and this is the number that comes from.
This is our, uh.
Enterprise.
Fleet management, yes.
So, and I know, chief, that some of this is, this is what we're budgeting. Vehicle delivery is very difficult to anticipate, but this anticipates the delivery and replacement of four vehicles, and I think we have to budget for it, our folks at Enterprise do pretty well by us, but there's no way to know if we'll ever see those vehicles. Questions on the vehicles, I mean, it's, that's one big change over the years, it really has made things a lot steadier.
That was one of the main reasons, and.
That fleet management component.
Pros for going to that, you don't have large, every five years, this astronomical six-figure number to budget for.
Well, we don't end up running stuff that, at one point, the fire department ended up with one of the old vehicles, I think one of the detectives or somebody had, and it's like hard to believe how it passed inspection, I mean, so I'm glad that we're in a place where our vehicles are up to, to par.
I, you know, I will say, the program does keep us in safety.
Because that's an easy, it's kinda like paving streets, right, like, when you wanna go cut, like, oh, there you go, and then people cut vehicles, then you end up in a hole, so I'm glad we're not in a place where that'll occur. All right, seven fifty is capital purchase of minor machines, which is a label that includes all kinds of stuff, Rob, probably, chief, a probably good, good one to speak up on.
Before we get into that, uh, we're starting to get into some capital project things, um, Borough did have a threat assessment done, so we should not speak of the specific things publicly that are identified in that, they're all, all identified in your, your, uh, document there, is security upgrade number one, security upgrade number two, so whenever we're talking about that publicly, just reference them as security upgrade and then the number.
I, I understand at some point, but I'm not sure I understand why the first item under number one is highlighted that way.
That's probably the least sensitive one.
Well, I would think so. It's not about the building at all.
But it is a security issue.
We've talked about it before.
Fair enough.
Chief, are you okay if we talk about that?
I am, I'm okay if we talk about number one, I, I agree with Charles, it's the least sensitive one.
All right, John, why don't you talk about the drone?
I just don't think that we, all the things on the list, that would be the least thing that I would think we would need, uh, we'd have to have somebody licensed, and I just see that as a big training issue and cost that's never gonna go away.
I was expecting you to say what you said years ago, when he told you that he could, like, park it places and fly it around, and, well, you said that was Big Brother, and I'm inclined to agree.
Yeah, so, the, the training issue now, and I'll speak to that a little bit, and then I'll talk about the Big Brother, the, the training issue is not what it used to be, you, you can train online, you can get a license, the only thing you need the license for now is that if, if you don't have the license to fly a drone, you can only fly at line of sight, if you have a license to fly the drone through the FAA, which you can do online, as I said, then you can, you don't have to have line of sight, so the reason for the drone is, is, and, and I can't dispel the whole Big Brother thing, the reason for the drone is for special event overwatch, um, this is, this is area I'm not comfortable talking about publicly, uh, we maintain an overwatch for special events, um, that this will assist with, when, and when I say overwatch, it's, it's, it's kind of eyes in the sky, if you will, um, up high, overlooking the whole thing, we utilize other departments right now for their drones, um, but they're becoming less and less available, uh, these are also now widely used for accident mapping, outdoor crime scene mapping, um, we just, uh, when we had the, the, uh, car pedestrian accident up on campus earlier this year, um, the state came in and mapped our crime scene for us with a drone, rather than what they used to have a thing called total station, where they walked around and held it up and mapped it, the, the drone was up and mapped the, the scene in, in a quarter of the time it would take to run a total station on it, um, but, uh, the, the main thing that, that I would, it would be useful for would be special events, and not just, I, I don't think just for the department, I know the borough likes the, the overall pictures of things, um, so it, I mean, it, it could be used for other things other than, than policing, but, uh, it's, it's, it's definitely a very useful tool now, and they're becoming more common.
Yeah, I mean, I get targeted, I don't know if it's gonna get targeted ads or social media, cause I follow Bucks County Community College, because I take courses there from time to time with the fire department, but, you know, they market their operator licenser you need for that at nine hundred fifty dollars a pop.
At what?
Nine hundred fifty dollars a student.
Yeah, that's probably, that's, that's close, I think we found them for, for less than that, but probably not much less than that.
Yeah, they tend to be pretty competitive on that pricing for various courses, so that's, I don't know, I, I'm.
I started doing some reading on this subject the, the last time we discussed this, and, um, you're right, they are becoming more widely used, um, but they are still, I think, we could safely call them an emergent technology, and, um, there are a number of cases in front of a number of state courts right now, because there is concern about Fourth Amendment violations and warrantless surveillance, um, two states, Michigan and I think California have Supreme Court cases where they have ruled, um, that they are warrantless surveillance and are not constitutional, but nothing has been decided, as far as I know, by Pennsylvania's courts or by the federal Supreme Court, I, I don't think that that is, um, a potential area of liability we need to be on the, on the leading edge of, I think we can let somebody else make those mistakes, even PSP if they want to, but.
And we're not gonna have it, and we're, we're leaving ourselves wide open, I'm not talking about using this for surveillance, I'm talking about using this for, uh, the special events, um, and the parades and things like that, and.
And putting it up in the air over that, so we get an, an overlook of the route, um, in public areas, and most certainly, if we go into somebody's backyard and, and intrude in there, it's gonna be a Fourth Amendment violation, but that's not the purpose of this, um, and it's, I mean, the, the technology is much, much cheaper than, than it has been in the past, uh, you know, we're.
Much, much of our parade routes are also along people's windows, though, I, um, I, I'm not comfortable with this.
Thoughts on the drone?
I'm not sure I see, I understand, um, I think I understand why chief wants it, but I agree with Matt, that it, it would, it would be impeding on people's private, private lives, and not in a good way, not on purpose, but our parade routes, there's apartments above every one of those buildings, so you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna pass through it at some point, you're gonna see people's yards, you're gonna see people's windows at some point, we're intruding on something that we didn't intend to.
And if you are legally in a position that you're legally allowed to be, and you see something, that makes it admissible if you're looking at this, if we're, if we're flying over and we're over somebody's backyard and we're seeing things, then I would agree, but if we're intentionally there, but if we are legally in a position and we immediately, immediately recognize something as a problem, and we're legally at where we're at, and we're legally flying that drone, then it's gonna be legal.
No, I, I, I'm not arguing that point, I'm arguing what you might have seen that you weren't supposed to see, that you have no business seeing in people's private lives, in people's private homes, in people's private yards, that is not illegal, but you just happened to see it with your camera, and that is impeding upon their privacy of their own home.
Borough, this Butterfield.
I would counter that with, what's the difference if we put a helicopter up there?
Yeah, without getting into the security details of public events, uh, special events, you have human eyes that are gonna be in positions where they're gonna be able to see certain things, uh, with the concern about civil liberties.
Yes, sir.
That could actually save some money, where, you wouldn't have to have as many of those type eyes in different spots with the drone.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't have to put as many eyes on, in, in spots as, as we do now, because we'd have, it's hard to discuss here.
We both know that we put as many eyes out as we can, and we're going to anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You and I both know that.
Polling in people from other departments.
We're not gonna reduce things, cause we gotta, you gotta have a person there to deal with it.
Auxiliary, yeah.
I don't know, I just think overall, for a whole variety of reasons, I, I'm not on board with a drone.
Yeah, I will, I will say this, and I'm, I'm not trying to be a jerk, but I think it's incredibly short-sighted, that's where we're.
I can take that, this is Butterfield.
I hearken back to the possibility of, of the maintenance costs and the background costs, that some of something that just, it's so new, um, I, I would find that difficult to explain to the public, the cost of something that's almost still experimental, I, I don't see the need.
There's just a huge difference between a private citizen operating a drone and a, and a public agency operating one, I just, I'm just not there.
All right, so that would take that line to twenty-three thousand, five hundred, the other items there, I'm not sure that there's anything else that's really, and chief, you can speak to it, but I don't, I'm not sure there's much else there that's really flexible, doesn't seem.
Is that checks and budget category?
In that particular, in four ten, seven fifty, I mean, looks like we're replacing a refrigerator in the evidence room, I'm assuming we have to do that, you know, um,
Oh, sorry.
I mean, there are other items there that, that I guess, I mean, they're optional, but they seem prudent.
Yes, and, and we have, uh, since we have a new evidence stack, we have made a concerted effort to, you know, I'll say get our evidence system into the twentieth century, but I'm not speaking, uh, so we are, you know, upgrading our evidence room, we really, there's, there's certain items that need to have enhanced security, uh, which would be provided by the cameras, uh, we've already done some of this with, with some, some monies that we've had, um, but, uh, the evidence room refrigerator is thirty years old, uh, and, uh, you know, if it, if it quits, then we lose evidence, that's problematic, this is, uh, the, the money budgeted for that is for a refrigerator only, no freezer on it, so that's why it looks a little higher maybe to some of you than just buying a, you know, refrigerator for your kitchen, we did spec out one that's, that, uh, has no freezer, cause we really don't need a freezer.
I mean, basically, this is all stuff either deals with keeping evidence that it seems like we need to do, right, containers, refrigerator, a computer for in there, camera system, and then we have the, uh, the storage for the body camera system.
Right.
And that's a big-ticket item, and that's part of modern policing, yeah.
Yeah, and I would just, to, to dispel any fears, about three thousand dollars for plastic storage bins, we're trying to look for some that seal, because we have some evidence still secured in the basement, uh, which it's, is, uh.
Not secure.
Not ideal, and, uh, it's, the room we have it in is secure, but, uh.
Is it dry?
Yeah, so we need to get, we need to get something in, in, that we can put some of this stuff in that keeps it dry, and hopefully keeps it moving, and, so that's why, you know, three thousand dollars for bins maybe seemed like a lot of money, but it's, that's, that's why then.
Really nice bins.
Okay, so that runs us, uh, we start to get into capital items, uh, fund eighteen, four ten, three two nine, that deals with the transition to the new, uh, enterprise software, so that's not really something that's within the police department's control, that's their. that's within the police department's control. That's their portion of it. And then we start getting into security upgrade number two. A little over $12,000.
Yep.
Exhibit 410A, if you're looking at exhibits. Okay.
That, that, that kind of is what it is, folks side up. They don't know how to.
Yep. So, I'm just going to frame it up. Is there anyone that does not want to do that?
No.
And we really, you know, don't get into specifics, but this is all recommended.
And there is an exhibit 410 in the exhibits folder.
Yeah, 410A that may help you, but these are all things that were recommended by a, an assessment that was done by, Chief may be helping with that. We can say that.
The, the assessment's called a risk and vulnerability assessment. It's done by what they call the ARBAT team at the state police. And they came in last year.
It's PSP, yeah.
Yeah, and they came in and they did an assessment of the entire building and recommended a number of things. And we're getting into some of those here now. All these, all these security enhancements, safe number one, and I think number one might even be mentioned in there in some things, are, are part of that assessment. And either just some of the more doable, higher ticket items, if you will.
And this is more of the secu, for security measures, not the breed and model that we were thinking that we might have to do in the front office, first floor, front office reception area?
This is not personnel related or anything like that. No, this is a.
Number two is purely.
Overarching.
Safety.
Security measure here at the building.
And this is all ARPA money?
So, this will be coming from our reserves that we have been building up in our capital reserve fund over the last two and a half years.
So, one thing with ARPA funds, it's, it's like how you look at it. So, we, we've been utilizing ARPA funds for staffing. That allows us to, we weren't allowed to lower the tax rate by law. So, that allowed us to bank monies that make them available for capital projects such as this. So, directly from ARPA, no. As a result of ARPA, yes.
That's a good way to say it. Yep.
And there, and, you know, this would be theoretically a one-time expenditure.
Right.
Well, there'll be some maintenance down the road, but basically, it's a one-time purchase.
Yeah. All right, the.
So, we, we keep that one?
Yes. Sounds like it. I, you know, I don't think anybody's looking to cut that one. That takes us to security upgrade at number three. That's exhibit 410B. So, if you've not opened 410B, I recommend you do. So, I, I don't want to rush anyone, but if people are done, I'd also make sure that we're.
Do we know much about this vendor? I highly recommend it.
The vendor.
That's, that's a fair question.
Yeah, the vendor, the vendor was, we got the vendor from the college.
That's good. That's all I need. I need a ver, reputable reference.
This is the type of business that they conduct.
Thank you, that's all.
Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes. Anybody want to get rid of number three? I guess I should be kind of, Mr. Carr, nobody has to go first specifically, but I want to make sure everybody read it. Mr. Butterfield, you're good? Mr. Carr, it looks like he's good. Mr. Butterfield, keep it. All right. Mr. Lawler?
I think so. My computer just decided to.
You went to, yeah, I know the feeling. Okay, yeah, I'm on board to keep that, definitely. And then that takes us to security upgrade number four, which is exhibit 410C.
Yeah, this is definitely one that was sort of, I think, the low hanging fruit and it definitely has a lot of bang for the buck. I think we should definitely pursue it.
This one is, is, if there's one that's nearest and dearest to my heart, this is it. There have been numerous situations recognized, I would say almost monthly, but this will correct.
Okay. So, again, this one corrects a known or identified issue. It's part of our PSP devaluation. And again, this vendor does this type of work, correct?
Yes, they do, yes. I believe they did the original work.
Okay.
Because if I'm not mistaken, I think we got this one from Mr. Thor.
Well, sometimes it's good to just pull out the old invoices and get it from the same place. All right, I'm going to be looking for an affirmative then when people are ready on security upgrade four. Butterfield, yeah. Take a minute if you need. That's not a problem at all.
Taken.
So, show them the exhibit.
And I, I think I should point out too, the part of that is replacing existing equipment that malfunctions more than it works properly.
Talking about the same thing. That's probably been the history of that.
So, do we want to go with that same vendor?
It's, it's a different type of that equipment.
Okay.
I think your options are limited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that your options are limited.
Okay, everybody good with security upgrade four? All right, that takes us to the end of the police department.
So, unless counsel wants to revisit any of the departments in Fund One that we've discussed at prior meetings, we are balanced at $6,965,219 for the general fund.
Wow. Can you read that number again? Yeah, that's what I showed.
Now, the reason we're balanced there is because there is a sizable drawdown of ARPA money to balance that.
And some of that's going to capital reserves, though, also.
Correct. Better part of 300, 400,000 is going to capital reserves as planned.
Yeah. All right. So, the reality here is we're going to draw down significantly on the ARPA funds. The other part of that, though, is that ARPA funds have to be spent. As a result of this, we'll be able to bank some money back for capital reserve, capital projects for things that are coming, not just the item that we discussed here with the security issues, but also as we look towards the gateway connectivity project with Baltimore Street, welcome center of these things, this envisions banking back money for those items as we go forward. As we look into 25 and 26, this will set up the scenario where you'll start to have to phase in the tax increases that'll be necessary to, to adjust to a post-ARPA reality.
Yep.
Now, I said again, as we went back to, when we budgeted for 21, ARPA didn't exist. So, we did have an increase at that time and we did some other things to, to kind of, you know, keep things in check. But the budget has grown substantially over the years. It really has.
That balance is predicated on adopting the fee resolution as proposed. So, I don't know, Mr. President, if you want to go through that document real quick.
Let's at least touch on the.
The highlights.
Changes.
Yep.
And did we say, or did I hear at one of these budget workshops, the traffic studies that are being done, ARPA money?
That is, that is included in the general fund, yes.
But can we use some of the ARPA money for that or not?
Technically, no, but it's, your, the traffic studies at the, designing intersections is included in this budget in the general fund under roads and alleys.
About six of them at least?
I believe we budgeted for five.
Yeah. Yep. All right, so I'm looking at the, the fee resolution schedule draft, 2024 fee resolution draft is the name of the document. There are a few changes here. Really, they are what I almost call adjustments.
Yes.
Inflation-related adjustments. None of them is substantial.
Inflationary-related adjustments, that's correct.
Really?
Yep. The, the big one, well, the, the first one's really noticed still on page nine. There's a small increase on the square footage for outdoor dining, only 25 cent increase from $4 to $4.25 per square foot. The big one on that page is under the parking fees. The 24-hour rate goes from 12 to 18.
Yeah, which we discussed previous, last week.
Yeah. Next page, in the event that the council wants to approve a special event rate for the garage, that would match the over, the overnight rate of $18. An increase in the RPP permit from 29 to 35. Modest inflationary increases if you are to purchase for a guest on, on your RPP street for two, three, or four days. Vehicle immobilization fee on page 11.
The boot, it's up $10.
What's that?
The boot is up $10.
The boot is up $10 to 160.
150 to 160.
Street excavation goes up two bucks to 95. Street degradation, modest increases here. Any road that is five years or less is fairly steep to dig into it. So, we go from 88 to 94 for one year, and then 93, 92, 91, respectively. After that, year five, it's 53 per square foot, 43 and 33. Inspection fee goes up a couple bucks to 85. And the curbing replacement goes up by, by a quarter. Service facility fee 17 cents goes to 18 cents. Covers them.
So, are there any?
What's that?
18 cents.
Hey, you could make an argument and I wouldn't disagree if you want to go higher.
That's the per gallon rate.
That's the per gallon rate, right.
To cover the replacement of the fuel pumps in the future.
I just hate odd numbers, that's all. It's an even number, but.
Well, it used to be 17.
Yeah.
You really would have disliked that. I think that's even a prime number.
It used to be 10.
Simple math, you know, just make it 20 cents and get over it.
Can I ask what the junk dealers' ordinance is?
Yes, you may.
I, you know, that's something I've been here long enough and I have yet to deal with that. It's just one of those legacy items. John, do you have anything on that?
There hasn't been any of those issued probably in 40 years.
We're not budgeting for that income, I suppose?
No.
Okay, sure.
If you're looking for a business opportunity.
Possibly Rita. It's probably only two people in this room. Well, you remember John Gasly?
Absolutely, oh my gosh.
Okay. So, I think you and I are in. I don't think anybody else remembers that. So, that's about how long that's been.
There is an ordinance on it. That's why it's in the fee resolution, but yeah.
Well, what's the date on the ordinance?
Probably a long time ago.
Yeah, very long. Yeah.
So, walk Pierce's house when I encountered the Catholic school.
Yep. But I'm pretty sure, you know, when I said that, you and I are the only two in this room that's going to remember that.
You know, I'm only 29.
I realize that, me too. Me too.
Are there any concerns about?
1966.
Any of the adjustments?
Really?
Or the fees as a whole? I mean, the big take home is that you're seeing a change in the overnight rate.
Yeah, that, that's the biggie.
Special event rate is set at that to match that, but we're not touching any of the hourly stuff or anything like that. Okay. Are there any items within the budget that anyone would like to revisit? Seeing none.
So, just prepare it. That means we will pass a budget with a .25 dedicated to fire department. Everyone's still on board with that.
The increase of .25, yeah. So, there will be a tax increase. It'll be fire service related.
So, that's the other big headline that comes out of your budget for 2024.
Small headline, Jim.
The general mileage, though, will remain constant for '24.
But the general mileage will remain stagnant as it is this year, yes.
How about stable instead of stagnant?
Stable, status quo, equal.
Yeah, stagnant's not really the best use, best word choice.
All right.
But okay. All right, there are no questions. Get that drafted for advertisement at our November meeting. The scheduled session on November 6th will be canceled.
Good, I'm probably not going to be here anyhow.
Okay. That takes us then to public com. That takes us then to public comment. Any topic?